I don't know if you do that.
I look great.
I like it.
Just saying.
Why do we have unstable connection tonight?
Can you talk about the people in here?
No.
Hey, if I can make.
Chuck, you look like the street.
Yeah, Chuck, you're like a hundred and thirty dollars. Ah, Kevin's here. Good. Welcome, Kevin. Yes, he is.
Hey, can you hear me?
Can, thank you. Gotcha. Can you hear us? There I am. That's it.
Use the microphone.
That's what most people say. Hey, Kevin, this is Cardi. Can you hear me?
Somebody unplugged me from the wall, so it was on the wireless and hopefully it will catch up soon right now. Somebody sabotaged us. That's right. I spent a lot of time turning around, going back to my car and getting my mask.
So the, um, with the, um, motion to. Um, well, folks, ready?
Ready.
Um. All right. Um, like the board supervisors to order or back to order, I guess, um, as always, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands for the Constitution under God, indivisible, infinite, just scroll. I like it. Um, we do have a, a forum. We do need to adopt an agenda. Um, the only thing that I'd like to add, um, right underneath, once we adopt this, the next thing, we need to do a remote access off motion so that Kevin McGee, who is on the Google meeting platform, can participate. Um, I believe it's like twice a year where he can do this, and this is Kevin's first, so. Well, child perfect. Um, anybody else have anything we need to add to the agenda? And there is a closed session.
Supervisor McGee advised you on January the sixth, two thousand twenty-one, that he will be unable to be physically present for this meeting due to contact with an individual who is believed to have been exposed to COVID nineteen. Although record, please note that the member is participating from his residence. Accordingly, pursuant to section two point four point F of the Madison County Board of Supervisors by laws and rules of procedure, I move to conduct this meeting electronically in compliance with Virginia Code two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight point two and confirm that A, a form of the board is physically present, B, adequate arrangements have been made for the voice of the member to be heard by all in this room. Second.
Which may be second. So the discussion. If none, all in favor, six of five say aye. All right, both at the same time. Kevin, you can now participate.
He's on.
Yeah, I told him. Uh, all right, all right. Um.
First of all, this needs to be the board's, um. I told you that the, uh, city manager playbook indicates that this ought to be not off campus by a independent person. What this would be in to make sure the board's desires that follow through. Um, what you find in some of these public meetings is that whatever the issue of the day is, or whoever's can take over a meeting and I don't, I don't think you want that with this, this type of session. So with that, um. My, uh, hope is that you'll, you'll work off of, of this sheet here, although you don't have to, set up some, uh, more or less a pattern, uh, material similar to what, uh, Ms. Davis did for you last year in terms of looking back a little bit, talking about goals, what, what, what the information is, what's, what's going on in the community and, um, what really helped me in terms of Indian County Administrator and the rest of the county staff is if you can identify what's important to the board so we can work off a shortlist of things. Here at the end, if, uh, if we have a shortlist of things, maybe we can do a few things well as opposed to doing a lot of things not so well. So, um, I'm not sure what else you want me to say, Mr. Chairman, but, um, we can go to, go to Ms., uh, Ms. Jura from last year when she talked about what, uh, what goals might be, purpose of the meeting and all that.
Is that the, uh, list that you gave us that was leading, uh, had, uh? Just one.
Um, that was, that was the outcome from last year. What?
Yeah.
What I'm, what I'm talking about is, is this business about what, um, purpose for the meeting, and, and this is a little bit different form, but um, last year we had a new member of the board of supervisors. Everybody more or less knows everybody here, so this is less of an issue this year, and not that it wasn't issue last year. Um. This is more of the same, what I, what I just went through.
All right.
Provide a, I guess, more of a broader picture game plan and what the budget might. Boss in the weeds and white olives in the budget. It looks like what the county's general board always wanted.
All right. Don't go to work. Uh, thank you. Um, all right. I think we work fairly well together. Everybody, everybody good on that?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Team going, checked off. Um, game of understanding of each individual perspective. Obviously, I, I feel like we've got that one under control as well. Um, anybody had a perspective change recently? Kevin? Kevin's with us. Um. Are there any specific issues, um, facing the county? The one that is, I mean, so, so evident currently, we might as well take note on this from the NICO. Broadband. Broadband has to be more or taller than before.
Yeah.
I just can't see no. We know we have some capital planning that we need to be doing. We know we need to get this computer system up and running, which seems to be. I can show you. Right, um. Who else got anything?
Yeah, let's see. Oh, yeah, well.
Waiting for you. It's everybody to shoot from hell.
So, so what I, I've, I've got this list here and then I shotgunned a bunch of stuff here too, so, uh, y'all bear with me. So this list, uh, Jack, that says updated per discussion at the January sixteenth, twenty twenty board of supervisors meeting. Have we all got that?
We have that on our, yeah, flash.
Okay, so I went down and, and looked at those, um, and put a star by the ones that I think we ought to, on this list also, uh, the first one, uh, being making necessary changes in the county's ordinances to enable the county's economic development planning and zoning officials to effectively attract business that's ongoing. And we've made progress on that this past year, I think, with the administrative changes that we made, uh, to allow uh, the planning department to, to approve certain things. So I'm sure there's others, um, that. So the, the next one, update purchasing policy and institute improved processes. I think that's going, that to stay on here, but I think that's going to uh, come along with the, uh, implementation of the new accounting system. I think that'll be part of that.
My sense is that's going to be an ongoing thing.
Yeah.
I guess it's a matter of interpretation of what it is, but a lot of that was updated on Monday, so.
Okay, with the inclusion.
Ongoing things. In, in two years, when we get this new financial software.
The processes. Right, the processes will take place, yeah.
I'm not saying we're way off base, but there is.
Yeah, because we even saw that during COVID. The, the bills, no one knows what the, what the procedure is. And then their bills, MJ, and that makes your job part of it complicated.
And then under personnel, um, transitioning emergency services coordinated to full time, we removed that, correct? That just needs to be removed because John Shera was not interested in doing that, as I understand. Uh, the next one, personnel study, that's done. The next three, though, improving administrative and clerical support to assist with peak workflow, cover long-term absences, that needs to go on there again. Uh, improving management services to assist various departments in grant writing, uh, policy research, procurement, in-house document, plan, preparation, project management, et cetera, that's, needs to stay on there. And just on, to add to that, so, you know, Orange is getting money from, from various places for broadband and for education and for childcare and this and that. Um, where are they getting the resources to bird dog that money, Jack? I mean.
Well, I think there, there's several things going on. First of all, my sense is Madison is, is a step or two behind because of what happened in two thousand and eight and the financial crash and the turnover in board members' staffs. It's limited what to do. There's also an economy of scale, a much bigger operation.
Mm-hmm.
Snapping and different, uh, I guess it's a different period of time. So ours is, is everybody works in their department and it's. Do. We are chasing grants. Uh, Brian Gordon just, yesterday, it's, he finally opened for this, uh, handheld radio system, so he's, he got some folks who are helping him, so we, we go at it on a case by case basis.
Okay.
Um, but for, for that, for Orange County with the, um, broadband stuff in Grace, they should be able to help you move this, not him, but they, they program a priority, so they have staff component, they have many sort of, they have plans to go, they have engineering done. So when, that, that's what the grant agencies want to see. They want to say, if we give you a check today, this could be up and running. We're just not ready for a lot of that.
Do we have the resources to, to carry out stuff like this?
Depends on what, what you want to do.
Uh-huh.
Getting grants is just not the way, there's just unknown things that everybody, I guess, state level sound, everybody ought to have those anyway. You do get capitalization grants for a few things, the revitalization for public safety radios or broadband, all those are new initiatives. I know back in the day, Sam was passing out money for water sewer plants to, to get the clean water act. So a lot of that's gone away, so it's. Grant's good upon what's needed to get things up and running, then. When you're talking about infrastructure.
Yeah.
We, we're forevermore chasing money, uh, say law enforcement, um, school resource officers on that, because that seemed to be a good thing and a state and federal government wanted to encourage local governments to hire school resource officers. So we've gone through that and maybe from the tail end of that, that we. So these programs and opportunities come and go, we, we just not. Whatever reason, state, state up to speed on.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, you know, what I was thinking, you know, like if, if we had, uh, you know, some money for broadband there, you know, look it up. We point to.
But we, but we had a one time before, but something happened. I can't remember.
They worked really, really hard, came up with a great report.
But John, yeah, John, remember Johnson said they couldn't get anybody to meet?
Yeah.
Get together and so just. Yeah, so we kind of dissolved.
And Nelson did a similar thing. Nelson now completely, I don't know if y'all have covered that, but I think I sent that to you. I was trying to read into, not everyone has access in Nelson County, but they formed a committee. Exactly what you're saying, that's what Nelson just said. And it's all affordable. I think they put a cap on it, a price, a really affordable price. So, yeah, what do we need to do to?
So, do you all, all right, sounds like from Jack, we, we don't need to consider, you know, hiring a grant.
Well, I think you already holders to silverstone touch on the basis that you said that we need some clerical support.
I don't know.
And some of that clerical support, that, like, roll into that and kind of, even if they're not doing the formal allocation of through the information so that you can pass up the chain to get it.
Well, right, and with, with, you know, we're, we're. Staff is special, especially, especially at the level of staff needing to chase grants. Where, whatever operating department, after, but yes, if you could, uh, if we could configure a position that would, um, grants might not be the priority, but somebody to do some management services in terms of helping procurement, uh, open uh, departments that will do a lot of hiring, hiring, because that's time consuming and specialized thing. Um, we're, we're training, we, uh, we could have better training programs for people across departments. One of the features of Madison organization is that everybody, we, we operate in these pockets, so, um, not just constitutional officers, but of course, everybody has their own building per se. Everybody's situation is different, and so they learn to operate on their own without, um, backup, and so Kevin, somebody like, Bruce here, right, team, somebody that could come in and hit the IT piece way as opposed to some operating department having to develop contractor or somebody in-house that can do that, so these, these kind of bigger wheel of counting than any individual department. So the way to go about it will now is to combine some of those into one, one package. There's some, um, this has been on the, for a long while, but it's just my opinion, we had other needs, EMS and IT, things like that, so it's a matter of how fast.
Would it behoove us to form a small committee? I mean, not like this twenty twenty-five people we had before, that everybody that asked to be on it was on it.
Come on.
Yeah. Because like you said, if we got a ten million dollar grant today, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know what to do with it, because we don't have anybody.
What's? Broadband authority, the five of you would be on it, at least in the initial point of it, because that's what's required by law. And, um, and then you would be eligible to apply for the state grant and the other important.
Yeah, just on all the other counties.
And I would strongly recommend, I said it for that last month, reach out to the lady that did it over, Margaret Bond, over in, uh, uh, Neathers, and I'm sure she could tell us that. She had all the templates already done.
Okay.
This is a case in point. What is that partnership of board supervisors going to be? What we need are. Sammy and Kenny in mind, and they have a role in. Always long-term view of this to develop some, some goals and then go back. The, uh, one of the things you see is, um, not everybody has. There are other places, uh, you mentioned Nelson County, their model is such that they're in the central Virginia electric office, they're agreed to provide be that, uh, into the run provider. We don't have a small provider in these parts to go from on all power to the actual user, so that's, that's part of the issue. We, we have unique problems and problem unique opportunities here to chase. So, yeah, we can look for examples, but the, the core thing out of a good plan, don't have that group of people, that's many members or paid staff or consultant to back it up, and if the board wants to go down this path, certainly do it, but it's going to take bandwidth in terms of your time, fine time, some cash, it's not, it's not going to happen on its own.
It does seem like the branch law, we're going to hear about it tonight, so come, as I say. Um, I, you heard the maintenance workshop, already.
I will, yeah.
Uh, they already kind of hold it on, um, branch law and people work, there's a bunch of work on. Um, they've got a bunch of work already accumulated, but it makes sense that they would be part of this initial broadband committee side of things. I agree with you, it's a twenty-five people and they just.
That's confusion.
Yeah, that's not. Uh, but in the grand scheme of things, pursue broad IDA, or not IDA, but broadband authority, is what we need. Zach, I think, um, maybe that's the direction. We need to form a broadband committee and then we can move forward with this process and identify where all our options are. Um, the other one, you're still on personnel? Can we kind of back?
Oh, yeah.
But the only one on personnel, and I pretty much think there's a doubt, but I'd like to see, um, some type of plan, one of the things. Um, we're watching our constitutional officers do that. You'd be doing it for our internal staff too, and we should be able to work with others or somebody and see if we can figure out some type of plan. But it was also the minute you were working.
Yeah.
If, if you can get them motivated to do it.
Absolutely.
That, that's the, sometimes.
If, if we throw the option out there.
Yeah. It's theirs to take, yeah.
So, Jackie, come on, who would keep track of everyone's continuing ad, finding their courses?
Well, not only that, but help, some of these things are across departments, I mean.
Grant writing.
Using Word next to it. I mean, we, we could do some things with, um, work habits when it comes to these, these network and the computers that, um, Bruce could probably help coordinate. Um, we talk about different things, uh, we, our vendors offer training in the form of, of procurement, uh, that's. So there's, there's all sorts of things that are not departmental specific that we can do, it's just, that's one more chunk of time.
Yeah.
Somebody, it's a very good thing, and I definitely want to get around to, but when you come to, it's not on the list of things. You know, you have to let it go.
Yeah. Um, let's see, got a couple more. Uh, I think this one's recent human resources support assistance, uh, for supervisors dealing with personnel issues with, with a county unit size, um, that is critical, and I think, um, that we ought to, you know, you know, ask Tilly if either join some more associations like SHRM or, or go attend some classes so that she can reach out and help these.
She does. Um, she does, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I, I continue to, Tilly is where.
Good idea.
I have asked her to have something, like, I actually want to do more of the killing side, but no, not really.
Mm-hmm.
HR, uh, so. Right on. There you go.
Has she done any, anything, has she?
I, I don't know. I'm sure she's done so.
Yeah.
And we keep hearing, don't hear anything about Tilly except for the good things.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's. Keep going.
So we've got, uh, none to capital projects, establish an ongoing capital improvement planning program. I think, um, I think that could be a ten-year, uh, program, and if, if we get some help in, you know, with MJ, I think, oh, you got it, you know, as I look at it, you'd go down, you would have all your assets and you could look at how old they are, be it computers, vehicles, whatever, and you can look at the lifespan of them, and it should not be panic undertaking for those items. Uh, facilities will, will be a little bit, uh, trickier because as an example, the, the, with the school population enrollment dropping, if we think it's going to continue to drop, then there's some some facility decisions that are going to have to be made down the road. Um, some we might not need anymore, but anyhow, I think I need a ten-year CIP plan. And then on the IT, uh, I kept all three of those in there, which I think they will come to fruition, probably. A, a lot of it in calendar twenty twenty-one, direct creator records management system, uh, in-house information technology capability for coordination uh, and replace the accounting software. So they're the ones that I pulled off last time, but so about half of the ones we had on there last time got. I think ought to stay on there, probably.
I know a lot of, a lot of the ones that are on here are currently in process.
Right.
Um, capital planning. Few specific items that we know, liquidation of growth. Um, and, uh, without living space at this point, it seems to be that we're even like before you were. Uh, relying on computers, so some of our inventory is actually looking a little bit better. Management of it would be helpful, so we don't, but how many, how many computers do we have?
Last time?
Yeah. Yeah, it's to be competitive.
At once, yeah, it ought to be staged.
Absolutely. Like when you're starting to do an inventory.
Yeah, I've got a pretty good handle on what's, what's out there right now.
Yeah.
A little bit. Um, I mean, it's slowing down now because of the, uh, care's money that's now.
But I think we've accomplished a lot, so we are going to be more up to date than where we were for sure. Um. Then the all sudden liquidation for revenue. Hopefully, uh, line fellow is going to take those. They're going to offer them. Um, anybody else got anything they want to add to that? Kevin? Anything you want to add? Yes. All right, all right. All right, um.
Mr. Chairman, I do, so that, that was off of that list, I'm sorry, but I, I did shotgun a few other things, you know, real quick. So, you know, I stole and say, okay, okay, boys, what do we need? Cell phone coverage, of course. Cell phone coverage, cell phone coverage. And then I talked to Brian Gordon about the tower that's going on, that is still in the works up there. And he was saying that that might be a challenge because it's, it's an island. Uh, it, it can't reach.
Far enough to touch.
Other cell phone towers, so cellphone company may be hesitant to, to do it, but anyhow, um, you know, that broadband and cellphone coverage is obviously, uh, needs to be, uh, looked at, or, you know, building for the EMS rescue squads on there, uh, need to find a doctor. I don't know how much we can do about that. You know, some of these things that.
You got a doctor.
We got a doctor.
Seven Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yesterday?
Yes, you know, things check fashion.
What's that?
Pink's check cashing.
Okay.
Yeah. Fanny, Fanny Ford, Fanny Ford Oats, you know who she is?
So she is a.
She's a nurse practitioner.
You can cover the practice now if you have five years, I guess.
Ah.
Okay, good, good. Yeah.
Got a big one there, everybody's.
Uh, let's see. Oh. Um.
She makes house calls, they make house calls, that's their whole thing.
Which has an offer power. Keep going.
Yeah, and I mean, I've, I, there's, there's a lot of things that people say they need in Madison and I, and I can't figure out how we can help it directly, like we need a laundromat, we need another fast food establishment. Uh, you know, all that, all that kind of stuff, like.
Think it would be nice to live, yeah, to have a few.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a laundromat, that's, that's really tough ones for people. But here's one, or actually two more. Um. We have, uh, what's that?
A laundromat, that's available.
So there.
I have a lot of people, yeah.
The one in town that works, I mean, there's one in town.
Is it still going?
A dry cleaner, you talk about.
Oh, a dry cleaner?
Uh, both.
Yeah, we sell that machine, we don't have a dry cleaner.
Oh, okay. I did not know that.
Yeah, the broken, it's tied to the next.
Are they closed? There was some kind of disaster, laundromat's back on the list, keep going.
A laundromat. Now, here's, here's a, here's a strange one and, and it's got to do with childcare. And, and I bring that up because I'm in, I'm involved with Skyline Cap and, you know, we have the Head Start Program. And a lot of their kids are after care, so the parents can go to work. Then you've got the learning center up there, you've got schools, you've got Boys and Girls Club, and then you've got aunts, uncles and brothers and sisters.
So. Well, it's a small part of it.
Yeah, and the, right, that's right, that's. Now, Culpeper Wellness Foundation donated that building up there at the, at the south end of town for the learning center. And of course, COVID right now is, is limiting the number of, of, uh, of customers, which is making it real tough. But I've, I've had the opportunity to look at that place over a number of years. And without the collaboration of Boys and Girls Club, the schools and the learning center, I don't think it can stand alone. Um, so I was talking to Nan Kaffidge about maybe, you know, if, if we could, if Skyline could initiate some sort of group that can get together and, and get involved the schools and stuff to see what kind of collaborations we come up with that would, that, uh, serve all the kids that need.
Especially before now.
And affordable.
Uh, and affordable.
That's the problem is with the early learning center, it's too expensive.
It's very expensive.
Correct.
And the problem, Boys and Girls Club, before COVID, they were at their limit. That space will no longer hold the, the amount of demand that they need. They can't accept any more children.
Right.
And then private babysitting is so expensive. I mean, you know, I'm back at the early learning centers.
Yeah, so suffice it to say, I think childcare in this county needs to be discussed and, and I could get Skyline probably to head up something like that and, you know, and, and talk about it. Um, and then the last thing, I've got, uh, the career and technical education in Madison. Uh, I heard Barry, uh, Penn Holler, uh, Schoolboy Meaton, he, well, he was mentioning that he'd like to see more money put into CTE. I couldn't agree more. I think it's critical for this county especially.
Absolutely.
For career and technical.
I mean, Green County has a really nice one, Culpeper's, theirs is bad finished, I think, to start. I don't know what Orange does.
Orange is getting ready to build one, they bought that building, right?
They've been talking about that for a year.
Okay, supposedly purchased the building on 20, on Route 20, that they were going to convert into, but.
But see, Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I have this list here, but I don't know, I can't figure out how to get it on this list and how the board.
I mean, some of what's your, some of the things in your address, I'm used to drive through you, um, that's economic development. And like you already said, if, about the changing of some ordinances to make things easier for business. I think in a lot of cases, this current board, primarily assisted by the staff, uh, Crazy does a great job, Ligon's doing a great job, uh, Hava doing a great job. I mean, just keep on going. Uh, when businesses come to Madison County, it's what can we do for you? What can we make the job easier? Um, we all watch the planning commission. As individuals go to bat for Mr. Winland out there. Um, I think we tried to do the same when it pertained to, uh, the Madison line deal, the, the free market has a big player in that. But it seems to, child care, I don't know, and I have, we hear it's an issue constantly, but I do have some reservations on that. Cause we give them, what was it, $15,000 on the front railing door slash.
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Um, that, that, that has been a long time. Um, that needs to be investigated and that needs to be sorted back out, so they can be filed. Um, the other one about the CTE, which is exceedingly important, and we've seen the success about it, but isn't that more of a school or a club appeal? Or is that something that where you'd want to school implement more of?
No, I, I have a feeling they are going to put funds there in this coming budget. So, um, you know, I guess it would just us to.
And currently they're doing CTE.
They are.
Building trade deals. Um, they finally found a halfway decent ag teacher, uh, which, thank God. Uh, uh, not with a heart that, that was a big issue, but, uh, then they're also partnering with some of the private sector. Uh, we know one, I think, um, I think LeBron Lambridge may do some work with them. Um, I think that's the Mrs. Taylor, so.
Yeah, the business.
There's, there's something that, and they partnered with Amber at one time.
Yeah.
And we see that they did, I think they've worked with others as well. Uh, what do you want to prioritize and party? I mean, what, what, uh, that's, I, I tend to agree with you. It is, you know?
Let's see.
Y'all want to go down to the survey?
Probably.
Just came out. And the anonymous survey, you got the anonymous survey?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you get your copy of the anonymous survey. Um, um, I mean, how would you like to see Madison County evolve over the next decade? Better internet, cell phone service. Obviously, that is something that people, it's on everybody's mind.
Yep.
Uh, we need to retain rural characteristics, attract small business. Call. Um, we need to see some of the non, non-real estate tax revenue, second. Um, we should be trying to incentivize some of these. I think we just did incentivize, well, twice recently. One, we passed the letter, we authorized Ligon to pass the letter on the tax credits for the, uh, low income housing, which is economic development, uh, even though it also changes the housing. Also, we just did the, uh, the medical, uh, um, at the lace factory, second, whether or not we authorized.
And revelations.
And, and revelations, exactly, exactly. Um, revelations. No, there was work put in on it, but that's a lot of private. You guys were, um, everybody wants to see Madison retain, remain rural, um.
You can't have it all.
Can't have it all.
You just can't. You're either going to have business or you're going to have nothing.
But it is, overall, I mean, we felt, we are definitely protecting the role of.
I, I think, like, I'll call upon it. Um, and potential discussion format for tonight's meeting. Um, down on, uh, for the long-term viability of farming. And I, I know a little bit about this, um, is that agriculture is changing. Based on our location, our geography, I don't think that we're going to be like, I don't have Fairfax. Um, it's just changing, which is different. I've seen with a lot of the small, small family farms that operate or medium-sized family farm are kind of going out. You're seeing a lot of smaller farms come in and adapt into, uh, the biological marketplace, which is terrific. Um, interesting, the other side of it, where a lot of those farms that are going out are getting absorbed by bigger industries. And they're, they're bigger and bigger and bigger. They're a handful of very, very big ag operators. They'll be a very, I don't know, I'm talking about it. Um, our location, I think we are going to continue to see absentee landowners. Which, I doubt, if you're Madison County in a lot of ways, because they require very few services. Um, they don't have kids in schools. It's a pretty bad, um, they need to provide taxes. Tax, uh, or revise revenue on that one.
So are those, those absentee landowners renting their land to air farmers in the, for the most part?
Air farmers, yes. And what else?
Yeah, okay, good. Cause what I, what irritates me to death is to have somebody, an absentee landowner that, you know, comes in here and buys 15 or 20 acres, puts a goat out there to roam around and then claims land use or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, Brian Daniels, Brian Daniels has done a really good job. Everybody wants to talk about the use of, of land use. Uh, Brian has done a good job. He's got people that were grazing, just a specific area, and, but are grazing cattle, heard slowly, were selling four, five miles of hay for over that thousand dollar threshold. Not letting that happen. Making sure that it's straight, we've got, going back to the state regs, like you should, making sure that they are qualifying for it. Um, the women Brad Jarrett, they talked about his conservation, uh, they qualify immediately.
Yes.
That's, that's one of the absentee farms, but I mean, look up there in Graves Mill, we've seen some very, very large farms for no. Um, rather than, or the, or the Roman, Roman, I don't know what he's doing, but I think he's probably be okay no matter what. Um, the other one is where they can harbor, that's a massive tract of land that is now back inactive after all. Interesting, I, I'd get to see a whole lot of farms going out, at least in the last 10 years. Some people get smaller, some people get better.
Yeah, on the employment side, Clay, I think.
Employment, yeah.
That, um, you can do, one person can do so much now, um, where you used to have, you used to employ, employ three or four. I mean, I've got a cousin towards Eastern Shore, he, he farms 1,200 acres by himself, but it's all cash trust. By himself.
Uh, the employment factor is a big one. Yeah, that's where we need to be working on this economic development. Because we do hear, and I've got to make some notes on it, um, we do hear that we need to provide jobs for local people. And that is definitely positive. I'm making, making this one of the, um, young people need to get out and see the world a little bit, and they fully realize how brave it is here.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Come back and do the thing, I think, actually a lot of young people, families, back to Madison. Recently, at 30, right after 40, like, great.
Um.
They're certainly employed. Uh, that also goes back to, on IT, you must figure out a way to do this broadband thing. People are reliant on internet connectivity, not just in the COVID environment. Um, for economic development, I'd like to see some control of growth. Actually, done fairly well on some control of growth.
Yeah.
Um, we, the focus on putting things on 29 and Spider Warehouse Mountain. Uh, the online line residence up there, that is a big one, Kevin McGee's 29 corridor study plan. Focus is directly on that, uh, we're pushing people that direction. Lady talks about lady that wanted to put the, uh, dog kennel up there on Port Alton, now she's on 29, and for businesses expanding.
Doing well.
Which is great. Um. Maybe even a larger one here. So we need just a, I think that's a general suggest here. Um. Internet, everybody's on the internet here. Um, everybody likes rural. All right. This one's sort of racist, you know, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Really, I don't think 29 is. Uh. Kevin, you got anything?
Just to listen.
All right, guys, good, good. Um. I think the thing that we probably don't do as well as we maybe should, trying to do something on when it comes to economic development in the town. I know, I know that economic development, the town is run by the town council. Um, maybe we should try to figure out how to work with them in a way that incentivizes a little bit economic development downtown. Live with streets are good for them.
Yeah, they are.
Good for other.
Madison's got the same street lights, the same everything when I came here in 1959, nothing's changed.
They replaced them all with L E Ds.
Yeah, yeah, that's a little bit, yeah. I mean, it looks just as dismal, nothing's been changed.
Um.
All right. Here's one for you, Charlotte. So on page 10 of this, this survey, uh, new sewage treatment plant, somebody wants, so here we go. So.
They have a, a grant to study Madison.
And that's ongoing, that's?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if they started, but I know they have the grant to study it. So, you know, something could become future.
Need to talk to you guys more often, finding out all kinds of shit stuff.
Yeah?
Is, is that R S A that has the grant?
Yes, sir.
What'd he say?
It's R S A that has the grant.
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah.
Hey, yeah, it's R S A that's the grant.
And you know, that could change, the county, good and bad.
No question. Is, the governor's hooked up to our, Yoder's is not hooked up to our septic.
No, water they have, sewer, they have their own septic, and Sheetz has their own septic system.
People have brought this up for years about, uh, uh, the septic, and we need septic for all the boats. So, does Wyman have septic?
He will not.
So that's all.
He, he bought that land, he doesn't have it, he bought, he bought that land from Carlisle, though, didn't he? Did Carlisle?
Not there, I don't think.
Not on that side.
On the other side of the pool, he has all the taps, right?
I mean, Carlisle is attached where the rural housing.
Yeah, yeah.
It would seem that when it pertains to economic development and small business specifically, and some large industry, um, not just box stores. Box stores are a different breed. Um, sewer, or sewer treatment is not always, I mean, they always seem to figure out solutions around it. Uh, Yoder's is doing just tremendous, tremendous business out there. Our condolences to the kid who passed it.
It's owing him.
Um, and.
And Sheetz has their own, it's constant trouble with it, but they have it, you know, they have, have to have their own.
Uh, the Wyman property, they have somebody that's in the waiting, waiting for one of the lots. I'm sure that they have thought about the septic. Um, and R S A has always been very gracious in telling us that they will build us one immediately.
Well, no, no.
It sounds reasonable.
Well, now, from what I can understand, the study that they. Well, now, from what I can understand, the study that they would pay for.
With the grant.
Oh, it's sounding good. Um, and this.
Then, you know, they might, they might ask for something from us, but I don't think it'd be anything tremendous.
Interesting. Um, what are some of Madison County's pressing issues? We're great, we need for additional revenue. Then there's lack of retail support for it. Kind of a dull basis there. Um, I don't think many people know about it, but we do have, uh, that's mental health is Jim McGrath's deal at the, at the. How's that going?
Good.
Good. Um, we need to be working with town on that retail deal.
You know, their grants, I mean, look what Culpeper did. On their, on their Davis Street.
Pushes tax money.
Yeah.
Or a small town, uh, remodel.
Yes. I mean, that's a vibrant, that's a vibrant place.
The grant that Tracy had, it was here to get Main Street project. Something like that, but that's how they updated a bunch of things.
There were times I had those iced tea drinks. Like orange haters, I know, I don't know if that's, but that was when it was for, it was to rebuild the sheets.
And the thing is, we can bring as many businesses, or entrepreneurs can open businesses, but it's locals who have to support it for them to be a viable business. You can bring as many, you can flood Main Street, but if you're not supporting them, they're going to go out of business. I mean, it happens time and time again, believe me, I know myself. So it kills me when people say that, but then you don't come and support your local business, so.
You know, that's the thing with Culpeper on Davis Street, because I work with so many yuppies that go down there. I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's the thing, and they don't wait for tourism for that, I mean, the local people support that.
Support it, yeah. Exactly.
I want to do this survey. I think we've got two initiatives, or three initiatives. We need internet and cell phone. We need economic development, they've had an easier process, any way we can. Um. We need, and then we need to do some capital planning on our side. Um, we know that we're working on this complex here, when I say this complex, I mean, not just wherever the address is here. Let's see, four, what are we doing, four fourteen? Uh, yes, but also the health department, that, that's coming around. Uh, that also means getting rid of the brick. Um, but then also, when everybody's behind this, this EMS goal, that's a big one for us. You know about a ten year man, probably two years out from doing something, but maybe faster than that.
So would it be reasonable that we have a plan in place for it by the end of this year?
Yes, that's right.
So we can definitely put that on there to have the plan ready, huh?
And how about development does, maybe maybe the facts of the clerical support, some part of the position that we can have down around different departments. We've done a will call. I mean, Hobs has capital, now we have that one young man, what's his name?
Allen.
We had Allen, and then we've got another lady. There, wait, what's one other image, Charlotte?
Angie.
Nope.
And, and.
Angie, there you go, so I mean, we're already doing this. Maybe that's something in the budget being approached.
Yeah, did we have anything in the budget last year for, for that? Jack, do you remember?
We're for line clear.
Clear.
We had, we had some part-time money.
Nominal amount.
I guess what happens in the case of their true, if they can position any. With my, my, I guess my idea, I give the chase is to develop part-time person that can flow between departments. It's important to have, bring somebody in and get them up to speed. If we had somebody that we have, right now you need it here, but you know, when something happens, which we found. But there is a welcome of the cultural element there and having our different share.
But that's gonna have.
Here's your assigned department, that's where you are.
Oh, there you go. You said part-time. How bad does it sound, but I'm almost in fact, say we need somebody full-time that will be dynamic enough to do the pounds from all over. And there's always what's needed.
Always shorting this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and the rate of that. And then our IT side of things with the, with the updated, um, accounting software, ERP system. Um, and then Livingston here is, uh, is IT inventory. That's, that's a big one. I mean, that's something that we have done very poorly for a very long time. God, moving in the right direction now, finally.
Well, no, so I have, in hand, it's coming really soon.
You hear that, Kevin? You didn't even hear that. Um, overall.
It's been internet for a year, and four-ten.
Uh. All right, where else would you go here, Hobbs?
Let's see.
Um. It, it's brought up here on a couple of different sides. Um, I guess we probably should talk about it. But we really don't know where we're at, frankly. Um, when it pertains to charity money, I know we all. For us, I guess. Um. And it helps us out in a lot of ways. Um, we saw the email from Hobbs a couple weeks ago about how it put us in the, put us in the right direction, maintaining a good cash position. But we need to be thinking about how we're going to continue this kind of doing. And I, and I don't know if that's something we see on the polls for us. Um, supporting John Shearer. Um, terrific work he's done, and that's a big part, um, hard time. Um, what do you say on all, on, on pandemic?
We don't need to forget that we're still in a state of emergency and whether, um, my pitch is projected to peak in terms of number of cases in mid-February. And, and hopefully the vaccine will kick in until we get to this herd immunity or whatever. We're, we're still in it, so we don't need to be let up in any way. Question keeps being asked, what else could we do? And talking about, we can close getting offices and what would that really do for us? Or, um, do we need to stop having these group meetings and what would that really do? Um, just to give you an example, it got past me, but, uh, the COVID leave thing expired in December. So, well, gee, should we extend that, recommend the board extend it or whatever? Because here before, that was a mandate. So what, what we came to is, well, what we're going to do is, we've got a good model in terms of department head thinks there's a problem, call John Shearer, who knows what's going on, consult. Or send somebody home because it's a COVID problem, just pay them administrative leave. Um, if they need to stay home because they're, they think their kid might be sick or whatever, that's.
That's all they have.
That's other leave. So we just have to play through it, but it's, it's almost every week, something like that comes up. Well, I, you know, who knows what's going to happen next week? But the point is, that this pandemic thing, it is on the priority list. We're going to recognize.
I think what's going to happen next is you love, you love us too. Um.
No, it's me, we're going to be here.
Well, yeah, that's, that's kind of why I was inquiring, uh, what, from John, if he sent out that letter to the world, which I see he did, yeah.
He shared it a trillion times on Facebook.
Good.
With positive responses.
That's what we need to do. Uh.
Oh.
I guess John was a little hesitant, or, or didn't initially send it out to, to everybody, because he didn't know whether it was appropriate to do so or not. So, uh, do, running through Jack and.
He communicates with, I mean, quiet man, he controls with no, I have Brian, so they. John's got it together.
If John Sure doesn't have the answer.
Did not answer.
Within, I mean, if he doesn't have the answer within a couple minutes, you give your call. John, I mean. I, I couldn't say a bad thing about John Sure.
He's, he's on it.
And, and that's what I'm trying to get all these folks that are, you know, after me about this. Have y'all got a plan? Yeah, uh, his name is John Shearer to start with, so.
Okay, yeah.
That's good.
Um, um, the, the other one, I thought, thought back to facility planning and capital planning. A major one, there's no, plenty of here shortly, parking lots and paving.
Oh, yeah.
The schools, we know have, when I say schools, I'm sure the rest of them need paved too. Um, of course, uh, the biggest one is the primary school, uh, which looks like we're going to go, we're starting the planning process. Um, but looks like your capital expense in twenty-twenty-two, the summer of twenty-twenty-two, rating and everything. Um. We know we've got some planning goals and things. Look, I think Hobbs has brought up multiple times, I think it is, right, right way to look at it, maybe we do a whole bunch of paving at once, try to capture some of that economy to scale. That's good. There's going to be very expensive.
Yeah.
Um, all right.
Take a break here.
Yeah.
We got, we got an email that just got from John Shearer.
Yeah.
Want to do your meeting?
No, please don't.
So, King Zach came out of VDA. Please note that Governor Northam has issued a state of emergency in response to the Commonwealth's support the activities currently occurring in Washington DC. There are no known issues in Region Two or Region Seven, Northern Virginia at this time. Um, but it goes on to say, uh, remain vigilant, and keep, keep everybody informed, and we'll do the same. So, we're in another state of emergency, of what's going on in DC.
What's going on in DC?
Is it on the Capitol?
It's on the Capitol.
He's in more.
Your job, your job, let me say. Your focus is incredible.
He's focused only on Madison.
This, this is a kind of thing, John, John forwards us to, we. Get, get it, get, it gets filtered before it gets to us, but you hear what's.
I wonder why Northam would call the state of emergency in Virginia.
Yeah.
He's at the National Guard.
Yeah, they.
Because, because only.
And they already shut down.
He's at the National Guard.
And at six PM, everyone's supposed to be inside.
Yeah.
But all, all, all the.
Oh, but not Virginia.
Are in Northern Virginia Hotel.
Oh, yeah.
So they're in Virginia.
Yeah.
Um. What? I, I, we talked about John Shearer being replaced. Remember when we hired, and one of the big things for John Shearer's position was being able to work easily, not being this overbearing weight, um, on all the different, from EMS to, to the fire and then to the county side. And it was such a hot, hot John Shearer, ever. Never at all, like, he's like, what can we do now? Uh, and that, I mean, just.
Yeah, that's his, yeah, that's his attitude.
Get another one?
No, I was just looking at this list that, that Jack put together, potential CY twenty-one Madison County goals and priorities and I don't know, most, a lot of the stuff I said already, he's already got it on here. Uh. Yeah, I was going down that list.
On, on this list that we've got, that Hobbs got here, this one to seven list.
Mm-hmm.
And I, it's the, uh, potential CY twenty-one Madison County goals and priorities, twenty-one, oh, one, oh, three. What is that with sixty Hobbs? I'm going to read it. Um. When it comes to the facilities, I do think we chat parking lots, I guess a big one for us. Um. The broadband deployment for Madison County. I think we probably should put down, we need broadband forwarding. Development of a committee, and moving force, authority. That's what we can do. And road shop, I'm going to tell you this. I kind of think broadband itself is just like.
Yeah.
It's all flopped together.
I. They tie them, you want them dead. They're tied.
In some cases they are, but in some it's not, like right now, I'm, I, I gotta go to Orange next week, the San Esmond. We're actually running five of them, I probably at my house, I got up there. Um, so there, everybody in five are in.
What, you're leaving Culpeper?
I did, but I got a house in Orange that I ran out. But, um, the difference is Orange doesn't have all the.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess an answer to your question is, yes, that's how a lot of people get their internet now. One of the things that a group needs to work through is, do we go with the interim step of having wireless from you get straight to the end goal, which is wires to everybody's house?
Somebody brought up that training, I think it was, uh, I think it may have been trace. They already see, may have tapped into some of this stuff, there may be in nails.
Right.
But they also have a lawsuit.
Oh, yeah, that's a deal, that's a deal, a lawsuit with the Esmonds, that's the, that is, it's Culpeper. Was super interesting, though. Um, but if they could figure out the lawsuit deal, that may be, that's kind of awesome. Um.
Yeah, so, so on this one, we're, number two, promote broadband deployment. Establish goals and organize, I, I switched it around, say organize and then establish goals, because the organize and it, from the planning commission the other night is, what you would, we would set up a committee to how we were going to set up the authority, is that?
Yeah, that's what.
Right, that's what they're. So it's.
We need to. And everybody's very, very aware of it, thinking some of us on there. Money side's always a big player. Um, there's not unlimited funds to throw at internet. At least half million of these subsidies.
Sounds right.
Um, I mean, there is big money.
And then we got to pay the lease cost on.
I mean, it's, it's big money that these people have.
And we can talk to the other board supervisor, couple in Orange, I'd call Nelson, you know, and see, I mean, any help we can get.
Right. Um.
Ken says, my best internet is exclusively cellular based.
It's funny, so you say people are using their cell phones to get internet. I'm in Etlin, I use my internet to get my cellphone. I'm kind of hooked to my wifi.
Um. Um, all right, where else would you go, Hobbs? And what else were you?
Um. I liked your one to seven ones.
Yeah.
But we need to, I don't have on there that Mr. Yow went through.
Well, let's see.
Take it with us somewhat and then bring it back to discussion, and then we need to put the timeline on.
Oh, where, you're under six, you have human resource support. Um, and that, I think, pertains one to Tilly, uh, specifically, but then also, uh, to the, uh, what was that? The, I mean, you were, what, you continued, or you did, that service, I think, of Interline.
Charlotte.
The, was it additional service?
This is training.
Yeah, if not tonight, we talked about it before, uh, Christmas and all, way back in COVID. Um, we were talking about getting it for like mental health for our whole.
Oh, yeah.
Um, digging up into it. Um, shouldn't we add that, or maybe we should add a number to it? Um, talk about this kind of transitional served person, as a full-time position. You know, I mean, if we're tapping into, I can, free, I'm a pretty clear time clerical, but that's really not a very good way to define it. We're already doing that. We're already doing that, I'm thinking of a full time person.
No, it is.
Where you put that person based on department structures, complicated and. Some challenges. And what, what else you got to talk, do you think any, just a little?
No.
All right.
No.
Tracy's listening as well.
I'm just.
She, I'm sure she's listening, probably trying to understand what we're talking about, but then also uh. That is probably about the stuff we need to be asking her, I mean, and she does, I mean.
Your hand up.
Such a funny question.
Yeah. Uh. All right, what else?
I had, again, my goal is to get the, you know, one sheet of fine goals and we'll refine it. I guess what's indicated is to work with Mr. Gal to bring this up. Yeah, articulating some of these things.
Yeah, I was looking.
You gonna work off of this one to seven?
Yeah, that's a good start, yeah.
I did, I, I like the report that we started with. Um that showed what we had accomplished, I said we, I mean, staff had actually accomplished um and where we missed it. But I don't even look at a lot of things, just working process.
Yes, I think that's quite an accomplishment right there.
And we know that the uh renovation of this complex came in a little bit over where we thought it should have. Done actually fairly well with some of this stuff, I mean, that school project is going just forever.
Um. When will that be completed?
Not too long.
What's that?
The school project. Well, there will be the school. Be sooner or later, I mean, they.
April.
April, yes. I would like, they started ordering. I mean, we got another one tomorrow, um they started ordering furniture. We, we created four hundred and eighty three thousand dollars of furniture. I was going where the, the walls are up and got the drywall.
Wow.
And walking through there, you know, before the drywall was up. I do that, they have done a great job, I mean, their design, the flow, it's just good, they've done a good job.
Yeah.
It's something that, it's not a spaceship, it's something that will last.
Yeah, that's all, that's all Clay used to tell me, do not make this look like a spaceship.
You should have seen that, we all follow a spaceship. I'm telling you, it's just, I'm like, it shows some of these signs, I'm like, no, we're not going there. Uh and they're sitting there in full proud, so.
Jack, Jack, when will they start on this?
Um they, we signed the contract and they were supposed to mobilize on, I think that their view mobilize means they start calling vendors to get. Um they, they said we should start hearing voices down there next week. Wow, it's all in their court. Um.
Finally, after forty years.
They, I'm working with Bruce now, they've got a. The wiring for the internet, that looks like that's the biggest schedule risk right now is having the, that building, uh the old, but internet ready for when the move is supposed to happen. Early mid March.
We'll have to call Jimmy Gray's, tell him to come down here and watch him do something.
We ain't done either. We can eat different duck. Uh. I've heard the one room, this is a station, I know we're currently working with Alvin and I, we had to get first meeting with them. Um we're gonna do another meeting this upcoming week, looks like we're gonna do a couple of tours, which will be helpful for me at least. Uh some surrounding jurisdictions, one John Shearer brought up, John Shearer, Brian Gordon, Brian's already sent back an email with different things that he's got as critiques. Um of the original Sonic currently, um I think John and Brian both brought up was the E O P room. Uh, apparently where we've been meeting to do the budget, deal up there in the fire station is the current E O P room. And I did a great job when they put it all in, thank, thank them for letting us use their facilities. Um but when we toured the one up in Culpeper, it was set up in a more modern fashion. Um and that's probably gonna be something that we need to address in this new investment facility, use for general training of people, and which is great. Um but also in case we're hurting, we're just plug and plug. How do you?
Yeah.
Put together your blue cotton, there we go, pretty good. Anything else we need to do on this front side?
Uh, that's the night that I work on.
You have any comment? Yes, sir. I, well, um.
So is the um. Is this memorandum gonna, is the planning commission gonna discuss this tonight there?
Understood that they wanted Peter Work and this Prince Wong.
To give up.
Presented for the board.
Okay.
And I think there's actually a memo from Mike Moscow to the board, commission recommends this. Should be in your.
Yeah.
I, I.
They did a good job.
They did, they did a good job, it's, there's a lot of history and a lot of background. The effort for broadband in Madison County and the areas right around Madison County. That remains that every, every local government is different in terms of attitude, where they are in terms of evolving toward the internet, where they have a. Population that wants broadband, and I think we, across the pandemic has exposed us there, everybody knows we need it now, it's supposed to, or we worked two years ago. Kind of ready.
Kevin, you got anything? The one that he says we're talking about.
Yep.
Yes, same. They also do a lot of up the door.
Yep, up here.